Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please take roll call?
David Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constance.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a clump.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible,
Thank you, everybody. First item on the agenda is Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business for June 9th, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting. This is an amended agenda as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions?
I'll be out in a minute.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of May 26, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the minutes from May 26, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting, as outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions?
Yeah, just-
Madam Chair, go ahead, Counsel.
Councilman Coniston.
Just mentioned that I was there, or came in late, or whatever the clerk wants to do.
At this time, we're going to amend the meeting minutes to state that Councilman Coniston was there, but not at the time that we took roll call.
That's fine. Thank you.
Mayor.
Point of order. Yeah, I'd like to point out that in the minutes of May 26, it's got present, absent, also present, and then it says, "Counselman Robert Constance arrived at 7:02 PM." So it recognizes him. In the same way, in the minutes from May 29, 2020, after you go towards the, after also present, it says, "Counselman David Abdullah arrived at 3:10 PM." So both minutes reflect that they were present at the meeting, but not at the point of roll call.
I didn't see that, so that's great. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, that sounds good. I didn't see that, so thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Minutes from the electronically held special meeting of May 29, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the minutes from the electronically held special meeting on May 29, 2020, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items. This is on the agenda only. Please raise your hand with the actual... Okay, and you have two minutes. Hold on. Mr. Zohair Abdalha.
I got him. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, good evening to everyone. And I just, good evening. I just have a question about budget amendment. As of May 31st, 2020, Act 345 Retiree Insurance reported by the controller in the amount of $4,2889.95. As of March 30th, 2020, the reported amount was $4,242,492. The expenditure went down by $219,000.602.05. I mean, how could we spend less money after two months from March to May? The number should be higher in May than in March by $219,000. Now, do we really calculate the amount of money we spend based on the individuals? We calculate each one, how much they spend, and we put real number, or we just put an estimate, which is reflected here, the difference of $219,602.05.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment on public hearing and comment on agenda items? George, are you looking?
I'm flipping through, and I'm not seeing anyone so far.
We have quite a few people in here.
Yeah.
At this time, I guess we're all set. Let's move on. Next, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move, Lady Counsel, approve Item 6-1 through 618 as outlined.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I had a question about, and I was gonna call either the chief, or I called someone from J&amp;M. So there was a tow from Tennessee to a police station, or to Dearborn Heights, for a vehicle for an investigation, a criminal investigation. Is that correct?
Can you please unmute the chief?
Yes, yes, I can.
That'd be 6-5 for those who are wondering.
It's probably the incident that happened with the murder, so that was a suspect. I was in Tennessee.
Yeah.
If I could, yes, that's from the homicide investigation. We actually had to receive evidence, and there's a chain of custody issue, so we actually had to send J&amp;M towing down to that location, along with the detective, and have it followed all the way back for processing for evidence here for the homicide investigation. So that's what that charge is for. As opposed to going down there, taking pictures and so forth, and leaving the car where it is? Yeah, it's actually, we bring it up here for the Michigan State Police Crime Lab to go through it. It's more than just taking, quote, "Mr. Coniston." It's a change that even after the, because it was part of the investigation. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Is there any other questions directly related to the current claim? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Reports from City Officials. First, we have Clerk Prusavich's resignation as our city clerk.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our clerk, city clerk, Walter, to accept this letter as formal notification of his resignation as city clerk of Dearborn Heights, with his last day for the city being August 1st, 2020, as outlined in Item 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions directly related to this item?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just wish he would have reconsidered this day, since three days later, we're gonna have an election, and we don't have a clerk. I don't know what we're gonna do.
Mr. Clerk, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I did first tell my thoughts with this council. I mentioned during my statement that maybe we can figure out a solution. To be perfectly honest, nobody called me. Didn't seem like anybody was interested in looking for a solution, although, I take that back. I did discuss things with Council Chair Malinowski. She requested that I, I was going to put it on at the end of May. I agreed to that, and I was waiting for more direction from the state of Michigan, hoping that we would see things that would make me possibly be able to stay on. Nothing was forthcoming. Therefore, I find it that my health and well-being would suffer with me being on the premises during that time. It is with a lot of regret, and it's certainly not my wishes, my intentions, or, you know, good for me personally, in a lot of ways, but it's the best thing to do at this time, than stay on and not be able to perform the job. So that's my explanation, Councilman Muscat. Well, no, I accept your explanation. Believe me, Mr. Prusavich, I've become a fan of yours over the years, and I'm deeply saddened, and it goes along with the rest of the city not having a clerk during an election time. But I do fully understand what you're going through. I've been proud to say that I can call you a friend. May I say that if the council body and the mayor remembers my statement, my statement was that I was not interested in leaving the city in a lurch, and I will stay on as long as an advisory role, if that's what this administration and honorable council body wants to do. That's why I was trying to look for a solution that would not cause utter havoc, more havoc than was being caused by the pandemic. And I still remain open to those discussions. So I just want to reiterate that I did say that, and that will never be taken aback.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah and then Councilman Bazey.
So clerk, being that we're on right now, do you have on your end any suggestions? I mean, you're saying any proposals. I mean, obviously, the only proposal that would be even halfway possible would be, obviously, you working out of the house. Is there anything on your end, being that you're in the system yourself, that you think would, you know, is there any particular method that you feel would work? Because I'm really concerned about this happening right around the same time as the election. That's very concerning. Is there something you can suggest?
I'm working very hard from, I remain committed to doing everything I'm doing. I'm dealing with all kinds of issues, the company ordering, issuing ballot numbers, applications, so forth and so on. I really, you know, I just want to tell you folks that it's not only me, but all these department heads deserve a lot of praise over these last several months. We've turned our houses into our offices. I've issued over 500 death certificates from my basement. I went through three tanks of ink. I had funeral directors coming to my porch to get things. I've had council people come to my porch to do business. We didn't quit, folks. We worked harder and more hours. We worked seven, and I'm speaking, I'm sure for most of the department, as we worked seven days a week, phone calls till 9:30 at night. So with that being said, Councilman Abdullah, I just wanted to say that. Nobody, I gotta reiterate, no, once again, I offered this, and nobody even called and said, "What's going on? What can we do? What are the problems, Walt? What would make, you know, nobody's asked the deputy, "What's gonna go on? How is this going to happen?" You know, it's just like everybody was waiting for this. The phone calls I got, to be perfectly honest, was, "Please don't do this." That wasn't the solution. Stay on. I can stay on and work from home. Is that fair to the deputy that doesn't have somebody there on election night? Some of you have been there on election night, and you see the utter chaos that goes on.
Mr. Clerk, is there any-
I'm doing this because I don't think it's fair, my deputy, to, you know, I was hoping that you'll bring somebody on in a hurry and get some assistance. And if you want to keep me on for a while, I'll be there by phone from 6 o'clock in the morning till 5 o'clock in the morning, like I was in a past. I mean, that offer's there.
Okay. I'd like to say something, Clerk. You and I have discussed that, staying on to help the individual who comes in, and I don't see why we can't have you there as a consultant and go and get this up and running smoothly, because we paid for Plant Plan to help control the van. It would seem more different. And, you know, it would help the transition happen quicker. And I also spoke with HR Director Sabota Herring. We are going to get this out there as soon as possible and start getting some applications in. We've already started that process. Wait, let me unmute her so she can jump in on this. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm done, I guess.
Director Elizabeth.
So I did send Council Chair Malinowski the posting that was used in 2011, when Walter Prusavich was actually the appointment. You know, we can start, it does not appear in the charter to have a posting requirement, although Corporation Counsel's on this meeting, and he could correct me if I'm wrong.
You and him, Councilman, Corporate Counsel, Mr. Yaki.
I'm not aware of any sort of posting requirement, unless you are going to have a meeting specifically to deal with the issue. In other words, this is not a posting that you have to go through as if you're going to fill some normal sort of job. This is a political appointment.
So what I would like to see done at this point is, we'll put the posting out tomorrow, and in our next regularly scheduled meeting, we will interview and then make a decision after that to push it along as quick as possible, so they can get as much training in before Clerk Prusavich leaves. Councilman Bazey, your next question?
Thank you, Council Chair. Actually, I was gonna recommend the same thing, but obviously, you've done most of the work. I was gonna ask the HR director the same thing, if she could post it like we did with the clerk position. And, you know, for the, Mr. Prusavich can stay on until he trains the new, the incoming person, but we appreciate him staying on for the training.
Yeah, that's the most important part, is to get somebody trained properly. And Clerk Prusavich is the only one that can really do it.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I'd like to make a suggestion, just so that we don't go through the same situation as we did with the treasurer, where the people that were applicants did not get on the ballot because they didn't turn in their petitions on time. And I know it's a little awkward to ask the clerk about somebody possibly replacing him, but the question's gotta be asked. Is it too late for whoever wants to become a clerk to get on the ballot for this coming November? It'd be the same thing, wouldn't it?
I already discussed this with Clerk Walt Prusavich, and whoever gets appointed will finish out the rest of his term.
All the way to the end of 2021?
Corporate Counsel Miyaki is waving his hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, the person would be elected. There would be an appointment that would be effective from the appointment until the qualification and election of the next person who would be elected in November of 2021.
Right.
That person, that person would serve from November of 2021 until the end of 2021, and there would have to be a separate election for someone to end up acting from January 1st of 2022 forward. So we're gonna have two elections, just like we ended up having with respect to Congresswoman Talib and Detroit. Exactly. So we're gonna have to have two elections in November 2021 for the city clerk position, one for a very short amount of time, and one for a regular term.
But between council, if you don't mind, Council Chair, but between now and November 2021, whoever we appoint is on between, basically for the next year and a half, roughly. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Council Chair. My fault. Sorry. One last quick one for the council. How is there any difference from the treasurer's situation?
Treasurer's situation is that the requirements of state law could be met in order to end up handling things in terms of the primary and the petition requirements, nominating petition requirements. Since it could not be done, as a matter of fact, I delivered an opinion to the mayor about this today. Basically, because those requirements cannot be met before the general election, it pushes off the general election that applies under Section 4.5 of the Charter to next year.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Muscat, you're next.
I was just telling you that Corporation Counsel was waving his hands frantically there, so he answered the questions.
Okay, yeah, I want to ask people to start using the raise hand application on here. It's much easier than waving a hand, because it actually shows on the screen.
I did have-
I have, Councilman Wenzel, yes, you did have your hand up. And when I lower your hand, don't raise it a second time. It means I've written your name down in order. Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay. Well, I'd like to apologize to the clerk for not reaching out to him in these last couple of weeks, but I'm going to go ahead, and I'm gonna ask the question. Mr. Clerk, what can we do to keep you on to the election? It seems like that's the question that no one's asked you yet. Is there anything we can do to make it easy on you, or what can we do to have that happen?
I'm not leaving my house, and I'm not able to be in that building on that night with all the people there. That is my major impediment, Councilman. That is the problem, that I just can't do that. I, you know, we all react differently. Some do not fear this at all, some have fear. Those of you that were around on March 10th saw that we had, you know, 50, 60 people. I just can't, I can't sit there in a hallway all day long. So I don't have, I don't have an answer for you. I don't-
Okay.
Am I even- Yeah, I'm sorry to have you repeat that, but you had this conversation earlier today, and I wanted you to let people know exactly how you feel about it, and that we respect your feeling. We'll honor them, for sure.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Sorry to say, or Mr. Clerk, your question has been stopped. All right, next item on the agenda is CEDD Joe Hashem, 2019 CEDBG Action Plan Citizen Participation Plan Amendment Adoption.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with CEDD Director Joe Hashem, recommending the city council approve the CARES Act PY 2019 CEDBG-CV Action Plan Amendment, amended Citizen Participation Plan. In addition to this, he recommends the city authorize the mayor to sign the certifications, SF-424 application, and SF424D assurances, and it will submit all documents to HUD after June 11th, 2020, as outlined in Item 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any questions?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Yeah, I want to thank the CEDBG Director and his staff for the hard work they did. And, but, next time, you know, I know we're doing Zoom meetings, but it would have been nice to get a personal invitation to the meeting that we had, because we weren't notified up until our last council meeting, when I believe our council secretary told us about it.
Mayor's Director Hatch.
Counselor Mus, may I speak, ma'am? Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead. Say unmuted. I'm sorry. I was trying to look for you.
Yeah, you unmuted me. Thank you very much. Councilman Muscat, I did talk about this particular one on more than one occasion. Actually, I mentioned every city council prior to us doing our public hearing. So we did post it on the website. We posted it on our websites, the city website. So I apologize if you didn't get the message, but I thought it was very clear that we are holding our public hearing, and I would have loved to have you and everyone participate in that one. I know a lot of directors. I know Chief of Police showed up, and we had a very good conversation, and I thank you for your support.
Okay, I think what the councilman was saying is, like, we sent you a direct link to your email for our meetings. He was hoping you would send him the direct link to the Zoom meeting to his personal email, instead of having him go through the website if it's city for it.
And that's my bad. Next time, I'll make sure that you get one personally. I mean, I usually do that. I think we were so overwhelmed at the time. This thing did take us a long time. I appreciate your support. It did take us about four or five times sending it back, back and forth, to get it to the right format, so we can, you know, get moving on this and get the money into the city, so we can start spending it appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion in regards to this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Controller Vance Corporate Fund and Road Fund Budget Amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve and concur with Controller Vance the corporate and approve a corporate fund and road fund budget amendment as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I actually liked that Mr. Zohair Abdalha asked that question about 345. I actually liked that question answered, if possible.
Okay, can we unmute Councilor Vance?
Got it.
Okay.
It's not on the budget amendment?
No.
No, it's not an item on the budget amendment. What happens with the Act 345 healthcare? Is this an estimate? And when we transfer the funding for the pension contribution and the fees and such at the end of the year, we take the calculation from the prior year's ending balance for healthcare expenses and apply it. So with that number going down by the $200,000 is saying that our expenses were actually $200,000 less than what we budgeted for or anticipated. So that's why that number went down, because we did the entry in the fund transfers for the Act 345 pension-related items.
Thank you.
Any questions in regards to that item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, Permission to Purchase EMS PPE.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move, Counsel, approve the purpose of purchase of the PPE for emergency use. It's necessary for our firefighters to stay safe while working with patients that are contagious. The total cost is $60,172 to be paid from the corporate expenses, as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I got a question for the chief. What exactly is a Fit Test Machine?
So when you wear an N95 mask, you have to be, in order to be official, you have So when you wear an N95 mask, you have to be, in order to be official, you have to be tested for that. And so it's like, it's a whole, it's like a dome that fits over your head. And then there's a different adapters that fit into it. And that that makes you actually certified to wear that mask because some people don't fit into the standard mask and you have to get them specialized ones. Required, you're supposed to be tested every year. It's always, it's always difficult trying to get that. So that is expensive, but we will use that for, there's some certain police officers that are going to be wearing similar ones and we'll be able to use it throughout the city, so.
And this is specifically needed for the COVID situation? So hypothetically, a year ago, we would not have needed this?
No, this is something that when, if you're ever going to wear, if you were ever exposed to a really highly contagious aerosolized type virus, you were required to be tested. And it was always very hard to find places that could do the testing and sort of have our own testing device that's going to, that's going to allow us to take care of it for ourselves in the police department for now until the future. Like that's something you can keep for many, many years.
I see, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan Permission to Purchase Firefighting Gear.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Brogan, ask him permission to purchase 13 sets of turnout gear and 12 pairs of firefighting gloves from Phoenix Outfitters. The total cost is 29,877 and this is to be paid upon receipt as outlined in item 9E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazzie, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I've got a question, if, if, and this is really more for the mayor or maybe the controller, I'm not sure. But since we have on these, because of the mayor's emergency authority, we have on this one, and one previous to that, mayoral approval for immediate purchase under the COVID 19 P P E plan. With that being the case, I'm just curious, is it just protocol that we're still approving it again or it's already been approved?
Yeah, if, if I might, I had agreed when the council approved the emergency order that we had issued, that I would bring items that we exercised under that agreement back for your approval. So that's why it's on the agenda, so that you're aware of anything that I acted over and beyond my normal capabilities and to get your approval. And I've been very cautious and I think very responsible in what I've allowed department heads to purchase. And I, I think you can see that those were items that were necessary in light of the circumstances.
No, I understand that and I totally agree and concur with that. I'm just saying, since it's already been approved, so hypothetically, just hypothetically, if we voted no today, would the purchase have still gone through?
Yes.
So then therefore just.
I think it's. It's a courtesy to all of you, is what it is.
It's more a receipt than, than approval. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, at this point, I guess I'm confused, are we going to be voting on it? I don't see a problem.
Yeah, you should vote on it.
Okay, um, any other discussion in regards to this item?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just think the mayor's being transparent with what he did with the powers that were vested in him by council. So I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, any other questions directly related to this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Riley Appointment Resignation Re-Acceptance. I want to explain that we did accept this at our special budget meeting, but it was, I was made aware of it that we have to do it at the next regularly scheduled meeting according to our charters. So this is basically for health pleading purposes. So again, I'll read it, this is Treasurer Riley Appointment Resignation Re-Acceptance.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council accept the resignation of Treasurer Riley as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Support. Support by Councilman Bazzie, is there any discussion? Council passing, is there questions?
No, I was just supporting and with regret.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miyaki Elite Sports Training LLC Rent Abatement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Council Chair Denise Maxwell Malinowski, Denise Malinowski Maxwell, sorry about that. With direction to the city council, wanted that previously adopted rent abatement for Elite Sports Training LLC hereafter called Elite, to continue until Elite is able to officially open, and that's in quotes, using a full certificate of occupancy. Further, if Elite does so open, then the rent for the month that it opens would be prorated and abatement would be otherwise, would otherwise end as outlined in item 9G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazzie, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
This would be for our building director, Building Engineering Director Larry Domski, I'm not sure if he's on or if I should check with the mayor. Is Larry on by any chance?
He was, George must have dropped out because I just had to re-admit.
Could I ask the mayor on this then?
Okay, hold on a minute, we're looking for.
The building director was on, he was on, yeah, period.
Ask Larry Domski, I can unmute him.
I just tried.
He's there.
Yeah, we found him.
Okay, there he is.
There he is.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, director, so I've got a question for you. I know we had extended it a little while back, I recall, because of the COVID situation. And right now, it's the same that we're going to be waiting on a full certificate of occupancy. What is the current status on that particular building for a certificate of occupancy? But before I do, before you answer that, I do want to say, I've driven by the facility multiple, multiple times and beautiful, beautiful building and a great addition to our city. So I thank Elite Sports for the beautiful building they put up. But I'd like to know the status of the certificate of occupancy as we speak today.
As we checked this afternoon, they still do have open permits, it has not been closed out yet. And we're waiting on them to call us for their finals.
Okay, but at one point, there was a delay in getting a certificate of occupancy because of the fact that the building department had been closed at the time or not operating at full capacity. What is the status at this particular point? Is it on our end or is it on Elite Sports' end?
We never.
Right now, it's kind of a little bit open as far as when, you know, how long the rent would be abated for.
Councilman Abdullah, the reason for this too is because they cannot be forward because of COVID. Um, so that's part, they're waiting, as soon as the COVID is lifted, they will get the rest of their permits. Because I did speak with them, they will immediately get everything done.
Okay, and is that the case, Larry?
Sir, we never closed, our apartment has been open ever since this virus started. They have not requested their finals on several of their permits. The inspectors have been out in the field the last two weeks. We have not heard for any requests for any inspections as of, as of today. That's all I can tell you on that, they do have open permits standing yet.
Thank you. I've got Council, Corporate Council Miyaki.
Uh, yes, I would like to ask the council to please say that the council is adopting the motion as set forth in the middle paragraph, namely where it says motion by seconded by to abate the monthly rental installments. Because I know that that's longer, however, that language really needs to be included and we had a problem with another abatement which was not done specifically per the recommended language that I gave. So if we could make sure that the substance, it's understood that the substance of the motion that's set forth in my letter on page one, the second paragraph is going to end up being the actual motion that's adopted.
Okay, it's concentrated, do you want me to read it right now?
Um, go ahead, please.
Okay, motion by Dave Abdullah seconded by, who was it seconded by?
Mr. Bazzie.
Okay, so motion by Dave Abdullah seconded by Councilman Bazzie to abate the monthly rental installments of $6,750 each owed by Lisi Elite Sports Training LLC pursuant to the Canfield Ice Arena Improvement and sports and recreational facility lease agreement between the Lisi and the city, starting with the month of June 2020 and continuing until this abatement ends pursuant to this motion. This abatement shall end upon the occurrence of the earliest of the following to occur. Lisi has obtained a full certificate of occupancy for the premises and is able to officially open. B, the city council adopts another motion expressly terminating this abatement during the, during the month that this abatement ends, unless it ends on the very last day of the month of a month, the rent for the month will be prorated and Lisi shall pay to the city the prorated amount of rent due as soon as practicable, practicable. This continued abatement is based on the current pandemic and should not be construed to amend the lease agreement or to otherwise alter the party's obligations under the disagreement.
Very good, thank you.
As outlined in item 9G.
Support by Councilman Bazzie, any other questions directly related to this before we vote?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So how long, how long does, because I know we got this obviously today later today, this was the first time we've seen this. So we haven't had a chance to do as much as we'd like, maybe investigation on this. But how long did they tell you that they would need or do they foresee they need between you? And I'd also like to know from Larry Domski, how long he anticipates this is going to need? Because the concern I've got, it's a little open right now. I mean, this can hypothetically, unless we cancel it, it could take a year.
Well, no, what it is doing is extending what we agreed to do on the last one we gave them.
And that's what I'm asking, so how long are we extending this one for?
During the COVID.
I know, but it's not, there's no set date, there's no when, that's why I'm a little concerned, so.
We have the authority to cancel it though.
I just think it's a little open ended, I'd rather have like a set date and that's why I'm trying to get the answer with Elite Sports, you know, how long did he tell you that he believes it should take?
As soon as the COVID is lifted, they're ready to go for their final. Done, it's open. The COVID is what stopped and they can't get workers in and finish it. Okay, is there any further discussion in regards to this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is for members of the public, this is comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I got a few things that I need to go, go over. Number one, been getting a lot of complaints from area in the city near Cronin, Crestwood, Charlesworth, that trash is being picked up as late as nine o'clock at night. It's happened a few times and they're getting a little upset over there. And, uh, you know, they can't get ahold of anybody right now to complain, but they got ahold of me. And today I received a few phone calls and I'm hoping that someone can get ahold of GFL and get an explanation of what's going on. I mean, nine o'clock is two hours past the deadline, that's my first thing. And second, I guess this is going to go kind of toward Mr. Domski. I sent you that email about the homes without permits being visible and you responded and I thank you for that, but why aren't we requiring them to post the permits? That this is, our ordinance is clear, they, those ordinances must be posted so they're visible. And a lot of people aren't doing it and it needs, it needs to happen, okay? And third, fireworks. Fireworks are already starting. I, I don't know what more to do about this. This needs to stop. We need our police department to take an active role with cars that are patrol, really patrolling our streets and finding this stuff. Last night was a war zone around in my neighborhood, bombs were going off, it's ridiculous. And we're not even close to the Fourth of July yet. We need police out there traveling the city side, uh, streets and finding these people. It's not hard to find them, they're shooting them up in the air, you should be able to find them relatively easy. And the third thing is the Van Born Corridor. Uh, I'm upset with Van Born Corridor, the progress that's been done and money that wants to be spent. We should have somebody from the county come in there also, sit to the county road. We should have a representative from Ford Motor Company there to, you know, I want the players that are going to be involved in this to show us what they really want to do. I don't want to spend another penny of taxpayer money before I get commitments from anybody else. And that's my stance of speaking. And if anybody wants to answer the questions about the fireworks and building permits and trash pickup, please do so.
Okay, I've got Lee Gavin here, hold on a minute, let's unmute him. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to address a raised issue with the trash. I spoke this morning with Rob, who is the supervisor in the area. Did say Charlesworth, they were coming back to pick up this morning and they did. The issue that's slowing them down is the bulk pickup. If everybody just had their trash in a container, they can pick that up, move at a better rate. But if you look in our neighborhoods now, so many people are putting stuff outside of the trash can. Let it be wood, let it be cardboard, so that's slowing the drivers down. They got to get out and handpick that stuff up. So the last few weeks have been pretty bad and they've been slowed down. And the reason, he says, is, you know, a few trucks broke down, but the bulk that they have to get out and pick up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Larry Domski unmuted, did you want to speak at this time?
Yes, when contractors pull their premier home or pull a permit, we give them a card to tell them, we tell them to post the permits in their windows. We do tell them that, some of them don't follow through, but a lot of times when I'm driving to a neighborhood and I see a job, the permit's our post it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Okay, thank you, Council Chair, I have two things, both of her are police chiefs. I did some emails on both of these items. The first one is we're getting a lot of complaints and concerns and I share these concerns, I'm sure everyone does can agree with the, and I'm very supportive of businesses in our community. However, not as a cause of public safety. So with that being said, Don Daley and Ford Road, there is, seems to be some ongoing situations, if you will, where cars are backing up and sitting on Ford Road, which is very problematic and very concerning. So I'm wondering, again, this needs to be reviewed and seek a solution and resolve the issue before there's a serious accident. That was the first thing I have. I don't know if you want to address that first before I go to the second piece?
Of course, did you want to, Denise, the chief?
Yep, sorry, I'm just trying to get his name on here, I got him.
You hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I sent you the thing, it's a delicate balance between a successful business and the way the facility is set up at that corner. We have posted the signs like you recommended in your email, I let you know that. We also have not received complaints here at the police station. We will respond to those complaints. Like getting an email the day after it happens from the councilwoman doesn't allow us to go out and enforce it while it's occurring. So I would encourage the citizens, if they see it backing up on the street, report its non-emergency number and will respond, as I said in the email.
Okay, so I don't have that email, so thank you for the update. The second thing I have.
I'm sorry, did you say you did get the email I sent you?
I do not, no, I do not, and I.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it was an email I sent you.
Yeah, I got that email.
All right, so this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the second thing I have is, you know, everything that's going on, you know, with police and safety and I don't want to, you know, say police brutality, except, you know, that's a concern. But I had sent an email and did not really get an answer other than for the constituent to contact you directly. And I have some concerns, because the council member, I think we all have responsibility to have this conversation with our, you know, police chief and talk about it. And, you know, I just want to say that some of the questions were, you know, we've got the Senate Bill 945 has passed out of the Senate, is now in the House chamber for a vote. But my question was, does Dearborn Heights provide mental health screening evaluation assistance for its officers and an ongoing and as needed basis? Because as we know, as you go through your career, it's very challenging, some of the things you see is very impactful. And I think it's important to have those ongoing evaluations and support. So I didn't really get an, you know, an answer. And I think it's important to have those ongoing evaluations and support. So I didn't really get an answer to that. But, you know, reports of inappropriate behavior, if that's what we're gonna call that. Maybe, you know, again, there's underlying issues and we need to talk about how do we deal with that and what support is there for our officers? So I just wanted to, you know, mention that because I think it's very important along with the screenings that are included in that bill. But I think as a community, we should have this conversation. Thank you.
Two things. One, I never got the person to be put in contact with me by you, so I wasn't able to respond to her because you never forwarded that info. And I would love to speak to them personally because that's the best way to do it. And then number two, I'm not sure what your question was right there. I kinda got lost in, in the.
Okay, so let's back up. So, yeah, so I emailed you as a council member, as an elected official in this position entrusted by the residents of Dearborn Heights. I asked the questions, clear and plain. They came from me. There was a constituent, by the way, not a female. Okay, this person, you said have them contact you. I went ahead and advised them to do that, but honestly, as a council member, we should be able to ask you those questions and say, what is the procedure? How do we handle this? Do we have the mental health screenings and the resources to support our police officers? I mean, this is a very serious times and serious questions that we need to have a conversation about. This isn't about pointing fingers and blaming people here.
Woman, the mayor's wants to chime in. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I might indicate a couple of things that the council might be interested in knowing. Number one is I and the chief have both been in contact with the Western Wayne NAACP Gina Stewart. And we have both pledged our assistance and help in putting together some type of forum between the NAACP and the police chiefs and also the chief elected officials of the community. We think that kind of conversation and frank discussion is gonna be very useful and helpful as we go forward in the Down Rivers and the Western Wayne. The other thing I wanted to mention, and if I'm incorrect, I would ask you the, the chief or H R director Sabota Perry to correct me. But it's my understanding that we do not hire officers until they go through a psychiatric background. And that is something that is not done by most of the communities. And I think that that has assisted Dearborn Heights very, very well through all these years that I've been mayor. And I've been appreciative of the fact that those, that we have not hired some people because they have not passed the psychologicals. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You, you are absolutely correct, sir. Not only are they tested during the initial stages of applicant as part of the testing process and hiring process, we also have ongoing available health screening resources through our employee assistance program that H R could tell you about. We also have our healthcare that were provided by the citizens of the city that's paid for us through our, our benefits that allow us any type of screening we want. And we also have the ability, if we see some type of issue that we have in our contracts that we can actually order screening, if something were to come up that would allow us or make, and we do that. So all those are in place for mental health screening issues and assistance for all of our officers.
All right, very good. That was the answer to the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there, okay, next we have Councilwoman.
All right, thank you. First of all, I, I spoke with some drivers from GFL and one of their main complaints was that the company is not providing them with bulk pickup trucks, which they have in several communities where these, these trucks just specifically go around picking up the bulk items so that the trash can picker uppers can go do their job more efficiently. So it's not an issue of people putting the trash out in bulk. It's the fact that GFL is not providing the trucks to pick it up. They, they're using their trash can picker upper trucks to pick up the bulk and that's not the way it should, that's not the way it should be. And I also, we've had a conversation with the hierarchy from GFL about turning over the yard waste cans and dumping the remainders on the ground and so they wouldn't do it. They're still doing that. We need to clear that, clear up that. Also, I was wondering what the status is on the absentee ballot counter machine that the clerk was talking about. Are we still going to do that or what's the, what's the status on that?
Mr. Clark?
Here he is.
We ordered that and we'll have to get it. We'll have to get trained on it. It'll probably be used in, I think we'll be able to utilize it in August, but August, we don't expect the we will be in November, but yes, we're, we're in the process of getting that machine.
Do you have, do you have someone in mind that will take the training so that they'll be, they'll be available for the election?
Well, the new clerk will have to, you know, the way it's been done since I've been here with all the new equipment. I learned it and then I, I have to train the other people. So that person would have to learn that equipment and then determine what, you know, personnel would be able to. It'll have to be done by somebody in our A V board.
So we're gonna have to take that consideration for sure about getting this, your, your replacement, that, because that's gonna be an integral part of the election, the absentee ballot count. Also, there's been, there's been chatter about these body cams for the police officers. And I've, I've been pushing these body cams with the last three police and they know what I'm talking about. And it was zero response. And the, any, oh, the only response I got is some, it was some legal issues. I was wondering what's changed since we've had our several discussions about body cams from then till now. And now all of a sudden, it's a, it's a hot topic. Can the chief, can you, can you talk about that?
You just wanna know where we stand with them or?
Yeah, what's changed? What's changed in the last year where all of a sudden they're, they're, you guys are pushing for body cams now? I mean, did I talk to you guys earlier and you said there was a legal issue before?
Well, so you're talking two things. If I, if I could clear it up, the difference between what we wanted and the legal issue are really two separate things. Our young officers, almost every officer we have, understands the value of a, a body camera. It's there really to protect both the officer and the citizen. That being said, there are legal privacy issues, different things that have to be worked through. Fortunately, the city allows our officers to get an education while we're going here. And we now have a sergeant that's actually been working on the development of price costing three different systems and doing the, using it as part of his degree attainment on what be the best systems, the, the legal ramifications and how we go about implementing such a system. So we are putting those all together. And that's, that's where we're at, but the police wanting body cameras is an absolute high brainer for our law enforcement agents.
Did he gather some prices for us?
He's doing all of that. He's actually met with the three different companies. Each one has benefits and drawbacks. We also have to work with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office because they're using an evidence system that is exclusive to one, but can also be used with the other at an additional cost. All those things are being worked at right now.
Okay, all right. Thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see Michigan opening back up. I know all our businesses in Dearborn Heights, including mine, are anxious to get back open and back to work. Everybody will be keeping their social distance and taking the appropriate precautions. And then I, I just ask our administration, our council, everyone to really stick with the Van Born corridor study and development. I mean, assuming that Taylor wants to do their half, their part, they're really the ones that will benefit even more than us. We're seeing a proliferation on both sides of Van Born of used car lots and with the Ford using the Masco property and the increased traffic. I think there's some, you know, real chance for Van Born to get developed and to get spruced up. So I, I, I will follow through. I'll talk with former state senator, Wayne County Commissioner Ray Basham, who's been an elected official in Taylor for probably the last 25 years. And to see if he can also help push it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Batty.
Thank you, Council Chair. I have, it's just two items, two questions. I don't know who can answer the, the two questions. The first one is on the FEMA grant to buy some of the flooded homes that we had a discussion a few months back when FEMA and state police showed up to one of our meetings. So have we submitted anything? What's going on with the FEMA grant?
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
I would defer to Christina if she's still on the.
Can you unmute Christina?
I asked to unmute her and there we go.
Okay, so I, I've been back and forth with Harry Keller Durakis about the appraisers. I plan on calling the residents on Friday to see if they're still interested and hopefully I'll finish that and get it forward. There's nothing that needs to be stated in regards to that because there was nothing officially that went to state that said we didn't want the grant. Like they explained you at the meeting.
No, I just, I just thought that we, we have to submit that we, we want that grant at a certain time. I don't know.
We have to do the grant. We have to do the grant and we're doing that. But no, there was, there was nothing that said that we, we have to express interest. I wrote the grant. They approved it. That's, that was the interest.
Okay, so we're not in the red to lose that grant then, right?
The red?
No, I mean, are we in the red to lose the grant if we have to submit something to the state or FEMA?
I don't understand about the red.
Are we, are we like, are we?
Budget issue?
No, no, I'm talking about, are we, are we, are we good? I mean, we're not gonna lose this grant, right? Because I thought.
No, no, you're good.
Okay, I just wanna make sure because a few residents, you know, asked that question because they haven't heard us say anything on the council meetings. Second question.
You guys did approve the appraisal, appraisal. Our F P I took that to Harry Keller Durakis, our attorney, and he's rewarding all that to make sure it's good. So that was, that was April when you guys did that? On, so, so that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. The second question is, since I know everybody's watching news with the executive order with lifting the stay at home, you know, for a lot of businesses, I just got a question from some residents about when are we gonna open the city hall? That's one of the questions, the last question.
Okay, mayor's got his hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was gonna announce that we've been meeting with all the department heads going through almost a hundred executive orders. And I think we've had Elizabeth Sabota Perry and Chrissy glued to the Michigan Municipal League websites and seminars and webinars as it deals with city halls. I am happy to announce that on Monday, June 15th, we will be opening up city hall, but we're calling it a soft opening. It will be, our hours will be from nine thirty A M. to four P M. and that's for the public. Employees will be, some of them will be on a staggered basis, but basically the employees will be working from eight to five in city hall. We are limited to no more than 10 people in city hall based upon the regulations. Now, everything's subject to change and we're constantly looking at different things, but we have been meeting with every department head and elected official. We met with the clerk today, in fact, to talk about their needs, the employee needs, and also have been meeting with John Sellme as it relates to the cleaning. Because we are in the middle of the day, probably gonna shut down operations to do a cleaning. And we wanna keep all our employees safe. We wanna also make it safe for the customers or residents who come in to transact that business with the city. So June 15th at nine thirty, we, we will be opening, but it's by appointment. And we will, we do have to limit the number of people in city hall based upon the executive orders. And so we hope shortly thereafter that we can open up to more residents and have more hours available. But for the initial, that's what we're going to have. We are meeting, I'm meeting with the librarian tomorrow. We're gonna talk, I think he's looking at trying to open up in some way, shape or fashion by June 22nd. But we have also been in contact with area city halls, but the governor's regulations are really dictating to a large extent what our hours of operation will be. We're also being very careful and, and have to file, I'll call it a manifesto for reopening and under the governor's regulations. And included in that is making sure that employees feel safe when they come in. Now, we're gonna require that everybody wear a mask. That is gonna be absolute with no exceptions for both employees and customers that come into city hall. As we go along, we've had some really excellent suggestions in regards to making this reopening go more smoothly. And we're looking at all of those. And I, I can't thank all the department heads, the employees for all their input, but I'll tell you, we've all spent so many hours just trying to make this thing happen and be safe. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, mayor, just the second part of the question, you, you touched base, you touched on it with making everybody wear masks. So with the employees or the, for the city, is the city gonna provide them with masks?
We will have masks available. We've talked about, what we're going to do is because we're not actually operating a recreation department right at the moment, is we've identified a couple recreation employees who will in essence serve as, at the door to kind of make sure that the people have appointments, that we limit it to 10, that people have masks and so that we have a, a good, easy operational flow. And hopefully we'll be able to accomplish that.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, any other comments from Council, Councilman Conston, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat, you've already won once. Hold on a minute, let me unmute you. A mask, you only go once in time.
I had something on my list that, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me now? I just wanted to express my gratitude to Clerk Walter for his, his years of service to the city of Dearborn Heights. It's, it's, it's an excellent job. He is dedicated to his position like no other person. He can be, he can be replaced physically, but as far as the job goes, that'd be a tough, tough shoes to fill and, and I'd like to give him, if it's pretty tough, I'd like to give him a standing ovation. Thank, thank, thank you, Clerk. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you. God bless you.
Next, we open it up to announcements in the community and our library director, Michael McCaffrey, would like to say something. Can we unmute him, please?
Yep, here we go. Just gotta hit it on your end, Mike.
Well, hello, everybody. Hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to touch on a couple of items. First off, I did wanna give an update on, on opening as the mayor had alluded to. It's been a long time. We have missed everybody. I'm happy to announce that although we're not gonna be opening quite the 22nd in terms of the building, we will be doing a curbside as of next Monday, the 15th. We're gonna start at Carolyn Kennedy Library, 10 to five, Monday through Thursday. And at John F. Kennedy Junior Library, Wednesday through Saturday, 10 to five. The reason that we have those hours is we're operating in cells and we're having employees rotate in. And also that schedule allows us to have the building, have no occupants in it for a few days. So it allows us to clear out the building. We're going to be doing that for a little bit. It's gonna be started multiple phases as we gradually open the libraries to our residents in a, in a safe manner as we can. So it's gonna be a number of phases. I'll be happy to talk with any. I'll be happy to talk with anybody later if they want to ask details on it. Next, I'm happy to relay that signing up for our virtual summer reading program is coming right along. This year's theme is Imagine Your Story. We have over 220 kids so far. If you want to register, please go to our website at dhcl.mishlibrary.org and fill out the form on the front page. We have lots of activities to share with you at home. So get on board. And I also wanted to give kudos to our youth librarian, Jim, and Jennifer, our teen librarian, who've worked very, very hard to do a complete virtual summer reading program. It's very difficult. They're actually going to be giving supplies to houses so they can do crafts and stuff at home while they're actually doing the program. So I think that that was worthy of some praise. So that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
Thank you. Any other public announcements in regards to the community? At this time, I will open it up to public comments from the residents. Do you have three minutes? Get your name and see if there's anybody else there. Councilman Muscat.
I forgot to say something earlier, so I'll say it as a citizen today. I sent everybody an email and I'm hoping everybody considers what I discussed about the St. Mel's Building. This, because this city really needs a new city hall. Ours is just about headed. I don't even think that the Smithsonian would want it. So I hope everybody takes that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to comment on that?
I'll just say briefly, Ray, I, I have had calls into the Archdiocese of Detroit, into the particular department that handles all real estate transactions. And I've been disappointed. I have not received a call back. I'm going to call again, and I keep calling every couple of days to try to make contact. I did talk to one other person that I know at the Archdiocese of Detroit. And they told me that there was a church out of Southfield that had been looking at the property. And they were not sure if whether or not any kind of sale had taken place. Or they just didn't know the status of it. And they referred me to the person I've been calling. So as soon as I get information, I'm going to relay it to all of you. And Ray, I'll give you first, I'll get it to you as soon as I can.
I appreciate that. Thank you very kindly, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've got Councilman Abdullah. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to let you know it is listed for sale with a commercial broker. It's listed for 1.995 million. And for those that are not familiar with that particular building, it's on Inster Road, just north of Warren Avenue, close to DeLuca's Restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from residents in the audience? Dana Parrish, let me unmute you. Hold on. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Abdal Hock for his appointment as the treasurer or the inland treasurer. And I want to state through you, I was the one that contacted Lisa Hicks Clayton on Facebook regarding situations with police officers as it has to do with George Floyd incident. That's in the news. As a retired police officer, I had some concerns. I did write an email to the chief. I got an out of office reply. Jay Lucas out of office until Monday. I don't know who that is. The questions I had directly were, how often do we, the administration, provide critical incident debriefings for officers involved in stressful or violent calls? What or who determines the need for these debriefings? And what falls in the category of stressful or violent so the debriefing is carried out? This was in the email that she sent you, by the way, Chief.
Okay. I'm happy to give you, so that doesn't have a mix-up. And for everybody in the city, you also can use my MMEYERS email. And that would come directly to me. And I'm absolutely okay if that email shows up in my email box rather than through the chief. I will try to find that email and respond to you with all those answers. I can tell you that we have a very robust policy on critical incident debrief for all of those issues. It is a very solid policy through the Lexipol platform, which is, as a police officer, a very well put together. That's all based on risk management and the well-being of officers and citizens.
The second one was, does the city of Dearborn Heights provide mental health screening evaluation assistance for officers on an ongoing and as needed basis? And the final portion was basically, if the Dearborn Heights Police Department provides a peer counseling program for officers, which is pretty important for officers involved in stressful situations and ongoing basis. They can talk to each other. It's a program that's been put together through mental health professionals. Because sometimes they don't want to go to psychologists, psychiatrists because of stigma. They better talk amongst themselves. And they're actually trained to talk rather than escalation, de-escalation, and helps each other.
It's great that you asked me that, sir. Fire Representative Martin, who is actually writing grants right now. She has actually written a health and wellness grant that we're waiting on getting the results from. And that grant will cover not only peer mediators, but it's also going to put an app in our officers' hands that's going to allow them both for health, mental health, physical health, financial health. It's going to have a panic button if they're having issues with suicidal thoughts. It's going to allow them gambling help. It's going to put technology at them so they don't have to find help. It'll be at their fingertips. And thanks to Fire Fire Martin, I do not know her rank, so I apologize to her. I know her as Lisa. She has done a great job of helping us secure that grant. We're waiting on that. And as soon as that grant comes in, I'll be presenting that for purchase to the council. And that will be done by federal grant money. So all those things that you said is part of the plans that I brought back from the National Academy to not only do a better police department, but a well-rounded, healthy, and physically capable police department that's able to make great judgments because they have good, clear heads.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that we've always had screening, probably for over 25 years, since way, way before I was hired. They've always done mental health evaluations, psychological psychiatrists. That's been there for years. But you don't, when you leave or after five or 10 years on the job, you're not the same person you were when you started. Not if you've been on the street, not after you've seen somebody's. After you've seen some horrible situations, you're not the same person you were. So the screening at the beginning gets rid of the worst of the worst, shall we say. As, as you accrue time on the job and you see things and do things that nobody should be able to see and do, that's when you need the help down the line. Because that's, that's when the officers need the help. And it's not just going to some school. They actually need help. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Okay, because we have Edward Jackson. Can somebody unmute him, please?
Yep, I got it.
Good evening, all. Did anybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, first off, I'd like to thank Walt and John for your years of service. I wish them nothing but the best in whatever comes your way. Walt, I understand exactly where you're coming from with this. This stuff has no discrimination to it, no A's, no nothing. And everybody's saying, everything else, nobody planned this for the last 90 days. I respect all you gentlemen. I wish you nothing but the best. To our council people, administrators, thanks, I can't say enough for not letting the city completely fall into crap mode. I know it has not been easy. But somebody's got to tell you, it could have been a lot worse. I appreciate your help in everything that's going on.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from anyone? Oh, I've got, is you here, Abdal Hock? I just wanted you to go ahead.
Hi. I have a couple of things to say. First, I want to thank John for his service and his crew on the office. They have been terrific in, you know, training me and telling me everything I ask about. And that is very, very nice of them. And I hope that I can, by the end of the month, I can be able, you know, to do what he does. Because it's amazing how many numbers, how many accounts, how many things you have to move. You have to make sure the money is there and how it's going to move, when it's going to be invested. I really, I was amazed with how efficient he is with his crew. And I would like to make a suggestion after what I saw. For the people who are on the ballot, Mr. Constant and Lisa, I hope after the election, or I mean, yeah, after the tax season, when the people pay their taxes, they will be willing to come to the office. One of them every other day to see how this office works. At least if one of them wins the election, they will have an idea what's going on and what to expect and how things are done. And for our city council too. I would like to see you guys with a huge knowledge about the city, every department, everything happening in the city. I would recommend to you to rotate in all the departments of the city. At least take one day of your time to rotate through the city department. See how it works, what's their needs, the equipment they have. This way, you will have excellent idea how the city runs and you will make the right decisions every time. And I thank you, every, every one of you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that has any questions? Okay, I've got Councilman Abdullah. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, I think from henceforward, for our treasurer, Zohair Abdal Hock, I think it's probably better to just announce if he's speaking as a resident or as a treasurer. I think, I think just for clarification, because any statement he makes will make a difference whether he's making it as a resident or as our treasurer. And I mean it in a, in a positive way, not in a criticism, just for full disclosure.
Okay, yeah, because you have a lot of people who do get a public comment that are elected officials.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, I just feel the announcement should be made if he's making whatever statement. And those were some very good points. I agree with them. But I, I think it should be made if that statement is as a treasurer he's making or he's making it as a resident.
Council Abdullah, I'm speaking as a resident. Simple and easy. I'm not swearing in yet, so I cannot call myself really a treasurer. I'm speaking as a resident. And I think these, these things I noticed in the last few days opened my eyes a lot more than I have seen in the last 17 years. That's why I would like, you know, to extend what I saw to you guys. Because you'd be amazed how good you will be as a councilperson and how great you make decisions for the benefit of the city.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any, if I ask for public comment?
We have someone with their hand raised.
Who? Oh, okay, unmute him, please. We have Mohammed Jami, Jami? I hope I'm saying it right. I'm sorry.
Right, I got it. You just, there we go.
Hi, everyone. This is, this is my first Zoom meeting, so I'm hopefully doing it correctly.
If you want, there's a camera in the bottom left corner. It'll start video so we can see your face when you speak. If you want to be.
Is that it? Okay.
I have the first one. I'm willing to help you.
I start videos? Do I click on that?
Yep.
Okay, it says okay to my camera, but for some reason, it's not. It's not doing it.
Don't worry, I got my camera turned on.
Okay. I appreciate it. I, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. I appreciate everybody's time and.
That's all right.
I wanted to bring up, and first of all, I'd like to congratulate Zohair Abdal Hock and his position.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to congratulate the whole council and everybody who is putting in all the time and effort, just like everyone else has. It's, it's pretty amazing, like the other gentleman said, not letting the city fall through the cracks. Amazing. You all are. That being said, as, as a resident of Dearborn Heights for the last 13-plus years, I want to bring to everybody's attention what I've spoken to a couple of the council people about in the last week. And that is my upcoming water bill. I want to kind of lay the, the, the foundation real quickly and say, my typical water bill is about $350 a month, let's say, for a 90% of the year bill. Last year in September, that covered July and August water bill shot up to $1,450. A few family and friends in the residence, I was extremely upset by this. I brought it to a couple of the councilmen's attention last year. And I'm starting the conversation ahead of time. Because I'm going to say, I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I'm 92% sure that it happened in 2018. But I wasn't so shocked by it. But when 2019 water bill came in September for, I believe, July and August, like I said, it was $1,445 when my normal bill was 350. Now, there's a lot of things that were discussed. Maybe you had a leak, maybe. Listen, I didn't turn on my water system last year. I don't have a pool. And the months after that, my water bill went back down to a normal $350, $400. So common sense tells me that how could my water bill be consistent throughout 90% of the year? Then that particular time of the year, I, I'm going to say, two handfuls of residents that I've been in touch with, water bill also shot up. So I'm just starting the conversation. I guess I'm doing some pre-venom conversation before this year's water bill. Because the last two water bills at approximately the same time or exact time happened in previous years. So I'd like to bring it to everybody's attention. This, this water bill issue that shoots up is extremely troubling. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Scott, Paul or Vance would like to say something. Go ahead, please.
Can you give me your address and I can check into it? I don't know if we spoke, if you've talked to me since.
No, I've never spoken with you.
Okay, yeah, because I manage the water department, the billing department end of it, so that I can go and look into some issues and discuss with DPW if they think there's something else going on as well. Can you give me your address, please?
Sure. 1927 North Evangeline. Now, again, well, when I, are you going to be contacting me personally by phone?
Well, if you want to give me your number, or I can give you my email address and you can contact me and I'll respond to you, whichever way you want, or.
I'll, I'll give you my number.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to do that in public. That's fine.
Is that a wrong, is that a wrong move?
No, no, I just.
Let me explain to them. This is a recorded meeting. It will be played on YouTube and other media. So your number will be given out publicly.
Oh, that, that I don't want to do.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured. So that's why I figured if I gave you my email, you could contact me, give me your address, and I'll look into it.
Mr. Janny?
Yes, sir.
I can forward your, your phone number to her if you prefer.
Yes, please do, Ray.
Okay.
That's fine. Either way, that way, you know, I don't want that out publicly.
Get an email.
Yes, I would greatly appreciate that, Ray. Please do that. Share with her. And I'm sorry, your first name, ma'am?
My name is Linda.
Linda. Contact me as soon as you can, whenever you want. If I don't, for some goofy reason, don't answer, leave a message. I'll call you right back. This is very important, and I can explain to you more detail that this was a very troubling issue over the last couple of years. And you have my address, so you'll be able to check it out.
I'll be able to look into the, the utility billing and see what I can see and speak with my staff and see if there's anything else that we can contribute before I contact you.
That would be fabulous. That's more of a response than I expected. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Okay, is there any further public comment before we end our meeting? I'm not seeing, is there anyone else catching anything? It looks like nobody else.
I'm moved, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Support.
Who's supporting? Support, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting has been adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.